All right, Bothell City Council is back from break. We're going to move into AB 17-136, Lot O. And I believe the city manager is going to give a staff presentation.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. This item is for First Amendment to a development agreement that we have with Main Street Properties for Lot O. If you'll recall, Main Street Properties purchased Lot O from the city and the purchase date was effective February 29th, 2016, and it was a leap year, so that date is correct. In the development agreement, there were specific milestones that Main Street Property agreed to. And one of those milestones was the start of vertical construction on at least one residential building by a certain date, which was calculated to be February 29th, 2017. Based on discussions and conversations with Main Street Properties, we determined as the city that that date was not met. And we did issue them a notice of default. There is disagreement on whether that date has been missed or not. And in the spirit of that discussion, the city manager, myself, was directed by the council to initiate negotiations in an attempt to come to agreement for an amendment that would move that date out and return Main Street Properties back into compliance with the development agreement. And I use "compliance" in our opinion. Again, that was never agreed to -- a default was never agreed to by Main Street Properties. It was the city's opinion that Main Street Properties was in default to the development agreement. And we did that over the last couple of months, and we're bringing forward an amendment to the development agreement that was agreed to at a staff level. And what it does is it extends the construction start date, which should have been March 1st, 2017, to December 31st, 2017, and then establishes an opening date two years after, which is December 31st, 2019. We've put in some additional milestones, which to date, Main Street Properties has met, and also clarifies communication, which was the issue with regards to agreement on the default or not related to communication of force majeure events. It also establishes an extension fee of $200,000 to be paid to the city by Main Street Properties. It's a non-refundable fee. And I'd be happy to answer any questions. And this evening, Main Street Properties is here as well if you have any questions for them.
Any questions from the council? It's Councilmember Sandberg.
If staff or the applicant would like to explain why you feel you're not in default of the purchase and sale agreement, I'd be interested in hearing that because I don't see any vertical development out there.
It's a development agreement.
In the development agreement?
Staff, from a staff perspective, we issued a notice of default. So under our analysis, we believe that they're in default of their development agreement. Main Street Properties disagreed. So if you'd like them to answer that question, and the mayor allows, then they would be the appropriate party to ask that question, too.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask the applicant why they feel they're not in default when the development agreement clearly states that they need to have vertical construction by February 27th or their extension to March?
So you guys have agreed to a fee. Are you interested in discussing the caveats of why you don't feel you're in default? You've got to go up to the microphone, though, please.
Yeah, Kelly Price with Main Street Property Group, I'm the president. In agreeing to the amendment, we basically agreed to move forward with a new start date, therefore making the force majeure delay arguments kind of moot based on this amendment.
And the new date, is that the March 1st date? Or that's the December 31st date?
December 31st, 2017, for vertical construction to begin.
And so what happens if we don't approve this?
Then the development agreement, well, there's a couple of choices. We would have to reevaluate Main Street Properties' claim of 270 days of force majeure delays, which is where the disagreement came about, which would then, if you were to take that position or agree with that position of 270 days, it extends out the vertical construction date to November 15th, I believe, November 15th, 2017. So that, they would then have, so that if the amendment's not approved, in our opinion, they would remain in default because of default letter. We never withdrew that default letter. They remain in default. We could be directed by council to negotiate a different amendment. We could hold them accountable to the date that they believe is their go-vertical date, which is November 15th, 2017. Or you could direct staff to look at other options related to Lot O.
So there's really no harm in not approving this amendment because they either go vertical by November 15th or they go vertical by December 31st?
The harm would be we've negotiated a $200,000 extension fee, and so that would be lost.
Yeah, that is interesting, given the fact that our previous experience with Main Street, you know, they bought property from the city of Bothell at a very good price, made a good investment. And I feel that if we did not approve this amendment tonight, it provides more incentive for them to go vertical sooner. And we could certainly put this property back on the market and easily double the sales price. I mean, with our experience with Lot N, they bought it from the city for about $2 million and turned around and sold it for $8 million just a few months ago. So the market bears an increase in the cost of that, an increase in the value of that property. So I don't see the benefit to us approving an amendment that, really, the original development agreement stated that they should be vertical by February 27th this year. And I don't know what force majeure events have happened, but no fires, earthquakes, floods, acts of God, or any of those things have happened, as far as I can tell. And I think that project either needs to go vertical or we need to end our association with Main Street on this property and move forward with somebody else in the new and higher-valued real estate market.
Any further council questions, or is there a motion?
Move the recommended action.
Second.
It's moved by Councilmember Agnew, second by Deputy Mayor to authorize the city manager to sign the First Amendment to the Lot O development agreement in substantially the same form as presented. Is there any discussion on the motion?
And I assume someone's going to respond to me because you guys are quiet until I talk. I cannot believe that we continue to make such bad choices with regards to downtown redevelopment. I hope the city never engages in this level of real estate development ever again. I hope they don't do it in the Canyon Park. I hope nobody believes or buys the argument that we have to own the property, control it, and make the same mistake in Canyon Park. We have lost millions of dollars in property sales in the downtown area because we sold low with the hope that people were going to go vertical, and not just the hope, with the contractual agreement, that people were going to go vertical quick. But instead, what we've allowed them to do, because they're better, these builders and developers are better at this game, way better than the city is, we've allowed them to sit on properties and wait for the market to rise and for the timing to be right for them, not for us. We allowed Main Street Properties to sell Lot N for a $6 million profit, and for $200,000 and 30 extra days, we're considering signing an extension on this. We need to stop doing this. We need to make better choices for our taxpayers. We have projects, we have major projects ahead of us that we need to build. We need to make capital improvements to our fire stations. Lot O is worth a lot more money now than it was years ago when we sold it to Main Street. So hold their feet to this contract, the original contract. Don't offer an extension. Don't bite for $200,000. That's a piddly amount. And let's demand that we get the vertical development by November 15th, or we turn around and sell the property at a much better rate than what we sold it originally. Because we've got big bills to pay, and we can't continue to play into this, "Well, they're a partner, and we've rode this horse long enough, let's just stay with it." No. Cut bait.
Any further discussion on the motion? Councilmember Freed.
Sure. Councilmember Sandberg, I really appreciate your passion on this. You've always been passionate about your comments and positions where you stand. So I don't disrespect that at all. I just come from a very different perspective. We've had a developer that's been in downtown that's really been a community partner. We had a vision that was cast by the downtown stakeholders group many years ago, 50 people that came together to put a vision for downtown. And this developer has certainly been part of that. We've seen the 104 built, completed, and occupied very quickly, I might add. And then we saw the Six Oaks completed, managed well, good relationship with the city, didn't have any permitting issues or sign-off CO issues. I heard that the inspections went well, and we have a successful project that actually was invested in further as that sale came forward just a year and a half ago. And then now the junction is underway, another sign that this developer is interested in our vision. One of the greatest successes, I think, of a developer is come to a city that doesn't try to push against our vision but actually tries to adopt it and build to it. And so we've seen this developer do it many times. We know it's a, he, or they are, rather, a known quantity. We understand how they work. They understand how we work. And I think if we're at this place where they're asking for an extension until December 31st to build another one of their quality projects in our community, that's something that we should do. In regards to making money or losing money in downtown, my recollection is we actually bought the North Shore School District property for $21 a square foot and sold it for something like $42 a square foot. I don't call that losing money. I call that gaining money on sale of property. So we're going to certainly get back tax revenue through, obviously, permitting, but further from that, sales tax revenue, and then, obviously, real estate taxes that are being regrouped into our city. So this is a positive movement forward toward our vision. We're going to see something start this December 31st and then occupied by December 31st, 2019. But we'll certainly be voting for this and hope that our fellow council members do so as well. And hopefully, nothing I said was disrespectful to you, Councilmember Sandberg. I do absolutely respect your position.
Any further discussion on the motion?
Any second rounds? Oh, Councilmember Spivey.
Councilmember Spivey.
Thank you. I'll be supporting the motion. As a council, we gave direction to go back and negotiate this, this extension. And that's our word. I mean, we asked the city manager to do that, and we're just following up on our word. There's not many things that you leave this world with, but your reputation, and when you say something, you mean it and you follow through on it. And as a consensus, we moved forward with this extension, and that's our word, and I will be backing our word, so.
Any further discussion on the motion? Deputy Mayor.
I just wanted to thank the city manager for engaging in the renegotiation and appreciate your efforts.
Anybody else? Councilmember Agnew?
I'll be supporting my motion, but I do agree with Councilmember Sandberg. My patience is exceptionally limited when it comes to Main Street Properties. You've made a considerable amount of money off our city, and I think you need to adhere to what you write down in your contracts.
Is there a second round?
Councilmember McNeil?
Thank you. I'll go first round. I also will be supporting the motion, and I, too, am excited to see you guys go vertical on this property, as well as any other property that you have within our city. And I look forward to continuing our partnerships and getting these things done so that we can have a vibrant community, so, thank you.
So there's a request for a second round. How do we feel about doing a second round? Are we going to move on? No? Yeah? Deputy Mayor? Okay, and there's a majority that do not want to do a second round. So let's go ahead and place your votes.
Oh, can I make an amending motion? I'd like to move...
The motion passes unanimously.
Oh, no, no, no. I'm a no. I'm a no, 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 and I wanted to make an amending motion. No, I'm a no. Let the record reflect, I'm a no.
Councilmember Sandberg has said no. All right. Moving on, AB 17-137, collective bargaining agreement with ASME for the period of January 1, 2017 through December 31st, 2019. And we have the city manager to provide the staff presentation.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor, council members. I'm pleased to present this item tonight. This is the contract for our collective bargaining unit referred to as ASME. These are the majority of our employees that work in this building and then are also in some of our administrative positions in some of the other departments like police and fire. All employees with the city of Bothell are highly valued. We appreciate all the work that they do. But sometimes our ASME employees, I think that we forget with some of the recognition that happens out with other departments and other individuals, how important these individuals are to the services that are provided to the city of Bothell, the residents in Bothell. And so first, I'd just like to thank all of our employees for the great work that they do. And I want to thank ASME for the thoughtful negotiations as we tried to lay out the course for these highly-valued employees for the next three years, including the year that we're already in. We initiated these negotiations in 2016 before I started. There was one major issue that was a challenge for both the city and for ASME, and that was the implementation of the classification and compensation study. The council adopted this study in December 2016. And these are always very challenging studies and projects. What you make and the position that you're in and the title that you hold is very personal. Between that and the cubicle that you sit in or the office you sit in, those are sort of the two very emotional and personal things that happen to employees in the workplace. And so as we went through the class and comp study, there were certainly some challenges with regards to the study. I think there were some leadership miscommunications that happened on the part of the individuals working on the project from a leadership standpoint, not the HR team, but from the leadership standpoint. Implementation became a bit challenging. I think there were some expectations that weren't quite clearly discussed during the project development period. And so one of the real challenges for us, and one of the reasons we went into mediation with ASME, was to really understand how to appropriately and effectively implement the class and comp study. And so that was part of the focus, the major focus of our mediation. I really appreciate ASME coming to the table, really looking at options, really negotiating, how could we do this the best for the city, keeping in mind being good fiscal stewards, but also recognizing the employees and helping this study be implemented effectively. And so we came to agreement on that. And so you'll see, there's a list of the substantive changes that occur in the agreement that's before you, and implementation of the class and comp is one of the key ones. There was a cost to that in 2016 when you adopted it. We made an investment of over $275,000 for our ASME employees. I do want to point out that there are still positions under review. And so you will see another packet coming forward, either in late fall, sometime in winter, when we finish it up. There are positions that still need to be reviewed and will most likely come forward with changes. And so I want to make sure that the council understands that there's an additional small price tag that will be coming with the final changes that will happen with the class and comp study, as well as some reorganizations, and it need to occur. What happens during the recession is positions are changed, positions are eliminated, changes happen within the organization, and people step up, and changes, and positions change, but the actual classification doesn't change. And this is the opportunity for us now to look at those actual classifications, so where people are. This study looked at where employees currently are and what their ranking should be and what their classification should be, not really where they should be. And that work still needs to be done. And so I just don't want you to be surprised in a couple of months when we come with another small package that does have some reorganizations, has some reclassifications, and has some additional positions that you may see some adjustments to. But as a whole, the classification study has been endorsed by ASME and is being implemented. And that's a very exciting thing for this organization. It's a fantastic commitment by the council and an investment in our employees here, and we're excited to move forward with that. There were some minor changes that also occurred within the contract but were also very important to our ASME members, and that related to hours of work and overtime, rates of pay, as you see in the staff report. We have an adjustment for cost of living for 2017 at 2%, and then we'll have adjustments for 2018 and 2019. All these adjustments do is keep our employees at market. This is not above market. This is just to keep our employees at market. We also made an adjustment to the healthcare coverage as a result of the Affordable Healthcare Act. Changes are continuing to happen in the healthcare industry, and most notably, healthcare costs just continue to rise. And the Association of Washington Cities made a change to the healthcare coverage that's offered to us as a member. And so they've eliminated the current healthcare coverage plans that we have today, so we can't have them. They're not available, and they've moved to a higher deductible plan. We've negotiated that new plan into the agreement. There is a savings of $243,000 annually ongoing to the city. But in recognition that this is an unexpected additional expense for our employees, those that are under the Health First Plan, you're going to see an additional $250 a year in a deductible per person, up to $1,000 for a family of five or more. And so those are unexpected costs that our employees weren't planning for, and we wanted to be thoughtful to that. And so as a result of the savings that we're going to see, we've agreed to contribute the first year of savings back to our employees' healthcare accounts so they have the funds available to make those deductible payments and then can prepare better in the coming years as this new healthcare plan takes place. And so that's the, on the next page of the staff report, that's the Voluntary Employees' Benefit Association. That's the contribution that the city's agreed to make. And then we've also agreed to an opener regarding healthcare. And the purpose for that is to continue to look at healthcare options. And this is a chance for us, maybe the Association of Washington Cities isn't the right healthcare provider, and maybe there's an opportunity to go out and look for other healthcare providers that could have cost benefits for the city but provide the employees with the same or better coverage at a lower cost. And so we want to be sure that we're doing right by the city and the taxpayers, and we want to be sure that we're looking at healthcare options for our employees. And so that's the purpose of the opener. And I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any, as well as HR staff are here to answer any more detailed technical questions that I'm not able to answer.
Any questions or motion? Deputy Mayor?
I just had one question. How many employees are in the ASME union?
165, approximately.
165. And then the cost increase, total cost increase?
For the total cost of this contract is approximately $1 million.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Any further questions or motions in order?
Who's the recommended action?
Moved by Councilmember, members by, second by Councilmember Agnew to authorize the city manager to sign the collective bargaining agreement between the city of Bothell and ASME Local 3845 for the period of January 1, 2017 through December 31st, 2019. Is there any discussion on the motion? Councilmember Spivey.
Great, thank you, Mayor. I just want to thank staff and the ASME members for taking the time and working through this, even though we did have a mediation hiccup, you know, had to go there. We got, everybody got through it okay, and it's, I'm hoping that this is an agreement that everybody's happy with in the long run. And I know that all of our employees, not just ASME, but all of our employees do a wonderful job. And it's a lot of these ASME employees that are out there plowing the roads and doing those things that make Bothell a very livable city and that we get the phone call, you know, I get phone calls when we do have those snowfalls. Well, I know when I was in Bothell, the roads were plowed. So just a big thank you to all those folks that work behind the scenes that make the city great. So I'll be supporting this. Thank you.
Any further discussion on the motion? Deputy Mayor?
I just wanted to echo what councilmembers Spivey said and acknowledge that, hopefully through these negotiations, people feel valued and they know that we appreciate all of their work and especially want them to continue being happy employees, so, thank you.
Any further discussion? Councilmember Sandberg.
I appreciate the work that staff has done in negotiating this contract, but I continue to be concerned about how we pay for these kinds of things. We've already paid $275,000, as the city manager pointed out, for the class and compensation study. We've already accounted for that, for this is now another $1 million over three years. The next contract that we're going to consider is $1.3 million over three years, actually retroactive to 2016, I believe. So these are really significant increases in personnel costs. And I've explained before how, as a citizen, if you feel you've elected people to oversee this process, that really isn't the case of how it works in this state. And so, you know, the collective bargaining process is not one that is transparent to the public. And as council, we set a general policy direction, and then we direct the executive team to negotiate on. And they negotiate with the unions, and sometimes it's a good process, sometimes it's a difficult process. But when we get to this point, really, I mean, we can only say yes. So I'm voting yes for this, and I vote because I'm appreciative of the work that the city manager and her team has done. I appreciate the work that our staff does. But this is just emblematic of increasing personnel costs, and maybe in the next discussion, staff will talk about how we pay for those costs because much of it isn't budgeted. And so that comes in the form of a budget amendment. And I guess I'd be interested to hear details about that in the next conversation.
All right, is there any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, go ahead and place your vote. Passes unanimously. We are on to AB 17, what happened there? AB 17-138, consider approval of collective bargaining agreement with IAFF, Bothell Local 2099 for the period of January 1, 2016 through December 31, 2018. IAF, as is the International Association of Firefighters. And we have the city manager kicking us off with the staff presentation.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor, council members. So again, privileged to have the opportunity to present this agreement to you. There were some challenges as we went through these negotiations, and you can see by the date, since the contract expired on December 31st, 2015, our firefighters have been working without, the existing contract extends, but we refer to it as working without a contract for over a year and a half now. And we've been negotiating with them through that period of time. I really appreciate, again, the firefighters coming to the negotiating table. We also had to go to mediation with the fire union, but I think mediation was a good process. We had good communication, and I think we problem-solved well together. And I really appreciate the union's efforts in coming to agreement so that we can be before you tonight with this contract. Again, I'd like to highlight a couple of items. This is a three-year contract, so it's retroactive to January 1, 2016, and will go through the end of 2018. There are some minor changes, things like supplementary benefits. There's an increase of $75 to their medical expense reimbursement plans. We clarified the working hours and shifts. We did have a miscalculation that both the city and the union agreed was a miscalculation. And so to reconcile that, we're making this one-time contribution of 24 hours, and to resolve that discrepancy, we created a rank for training lieutenant at 120% of the senior firefighter for premium pays. We eliminated in its entirety the special projects committee, which was agreed to in the last contract. And for the elimination of that special projects committee, we have agreed to provide all the firefighters in the union a 1% wage increase above market. all the firefighters in the union a 1% wage increase above market. And so council direction was to bring our employees to market and so that would be above for the agreement to eliminate the special projects committee. We also made some changes to the sick leave banks. We've combined two banks and have taken away the cap, but upon retirement, we've limited that to 50% of their unused sick leaves to a cap of $20,000 upon their retirement. We've also, at the salary schedule, the firefighters were well below market and so we've had to have some fairly significant increases to get them back to market. I really appreciate that they were willing to spread the 6.84% to get back to market rather than taking it lump sum in the first year. That would have gotten them back to market and would have been appropriate because that's, again, as Councilmember Sandberg says, we need to be good fiscal stewards and that amount wasn't budgeted in the 1718 budget. They did agree to spread that out over the three years, which makes this contract more affordable and a little bit easier for us to figure out the financing behind it. And I really appreciate that because, again, we want them to be at market and this is a slower ramp up to get them to market and so that's very helpful to the city. And so we have the wage increases along with the market adjustments for the three-year period and the total price of the contract is about $1.2 million. A portion of that is budgeted. These kinds of negotiations are expected as we do budget preparation, but we will have to take a look. We talked to you about that, that we will have to have some serious budget discussions in January when we do our mid-year budget adjustments and look at and potentially make some very difficult decisions. And those are the discussions that I'm having with the ELT now is we'd be very thoughtful, thoughtful about positions that we fill, thoughtful about decisions that we're making, thoughtful about being efficient as possible because personnel is basically 80% of the cost of running an organization like this. We deliver service through human capital and this is, there's a cost to that. And so that's what we're bringing forward to you tonight. So I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right, is there any questions? Deputy Mayor?
Thank you for the presentation. Appreciate all your efforts. I know that it was a long, long process, but the outcome seems to be a good one. So I wondered, how many firefighter, or how many people in the fire department?
Fifty? Fifty?
So it's 55 and then the total cost of the contract's 1.2 million? So I had a few questions. Could you explain the day shift incentive? I'm not quite sure I understand what it is and why there's an incentive for day shift.
Absolutely. So firefighters, their normal shift is a 24-hour shift, so they work from 8:00 in the morning until 8:00 in the morning the next day. If you take them and you put them, so they work two days a week, right, so a 48-hour, 52.3-hour week is their normal week. If you, if you take them and put them on an eight-hour day shift, then they're working five days a week. And so to have individuals be interested in a day shift, the union and the city negotiated a day shift incentive. Otherwise, there's no incentive for individuals to come and work a day shift and work five days a week instead of basically two full days.
Okay. And then on page seven, there's a note about, it's not a change, but I just had a question. It says, "To effect an annual average work week of 52.3 hours, each employee shall have off 192 hours." But the thing that I latched on to was the average annual work week of 52.3 hours. Because then on page nine, there's a discussion about any hours in excess of 48 in six days is considered overtime. So I just want to know if my interpretation is correct because it seems to be that we're basically building in 4.3 hours of overtime for every employee for every week.
No. The average work week at regular pay is 52.3 hours.
So what, so can you explain to me what it's talking about when it talks about in excess of 48 hours? I just want to understand what I'm reading.
I'm going to ask the fire chief to come up. That's an operational question that I need to help with.
I just figured, I read it, so I should understand it.
Basically, it refers to, if you look at the work week, look at it as a six-day work week, two days on, four days off, okay? That's their normal work week, which is 48 hours. If you, if you take that throughout the year, you get a 50-hour, 50.2-hour work week. If they come back and have to work during those four days, it means it's overtime. So in other words, if somebody's working an overtime, a shift on their four days off, they get overtime. That's what it's referred to. If they work more than, more than what they're normal, more than what they're normally scheduled for, it'll be compensated as time and a half.
Okay, thank you. Because I, I mean, these shifts are completely new to me. I don't know anything about them, so, and I didn't know daytime was unwanted, so that was kind of-
If you look at the 6% for day shift, it's like if you go back to Boeing or something, if you work night shift, which is not desirable, you get an increase for the firefighters. In a sense, it's kind of the exact opposite to work day shift. There's, there's an incentive.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Any further questions? Councilmember Sandberg?
Are our employee group contracts published on the city website? And do you know where they are? Are they under the finance tab?
I'm going to assume they're under the HR tab.
HR tab, okay. And so this, it's a $1.3 million budget impact for, I think that was what, in the heading of the agenda bill? And we have 56, 55, 56 firefighters?
1.2 million.
1.2 million and 56 firefighters.
55?
55.
I think we have 57 positions.
And 55 firefighters. Okay, just interesting to know on a per-person basis what that is or per-employee basis.
You were also provided in your packets a list of all gross compensation for the period of 2016. If you had any, that was ASME employees, nonrepresented police and fire, if you had any questions or references to that, just as another piece of information for you to have.
All right, any other discussion on the motion or is there a motion?
I move the recommended action. Second.
It's moved by Councilmember Agnew, second by Councilmember Spivey to authorize the city manager to sign the collective bargaining agreement between the City of Bothell and the International Association of Firefighters Local 2099 for the period of January 1, 2016 through December 31, 2018. Is there any discussion on the motion? Councilmember Spivey?
Great, thank you, Mayor. Again, I want to thank staff and the local for toughing it out. It's, you know, it's a long time to be going through negotiations and the ups and downs and everything that we as a city have gone through to be doing negotiations during that. It's a very difficult thing to do and to come out the way we did with, again, only having to get to mediation and sounds like that was a halfway decent process. I think that speaks to having a very successful contract negotiations. It's one thing in fire service contracts, it's very difficult for people not in the industry to understand a lot of the innuendo that the job has or the schedules have and, you know, what is a Kelly Day? And so if anybody's never negotiated a contract to take all that, a fire contract to take all that in and to struggle with it, it's a lot to understand. So I tip my hat to staff on doing this and to the local on getting through it. It's a great organization, great department. They do a lot of good things. I have the opportunity to work with them, not only at training events, but I have responded up here into the city on my own company and it's a pleasure to work side by side with them, very proud of them. So congratulations, city manager, and I'll be fully supporting this.
Councilmember Agnew?
I too would like to thank city management and the local for this contract. It looks like we were behind a little bit. We're trying to catch up. It's always hard to catch up. Unfortunately, we're probably going to be going into these negotiations here shortly again. We got and eliminated some things that were a little odd in the last contract and we needed to eliminate some of that stuff. It's a good contract. It's a good start. We got a new engine coming. We got some aid cars coming. We just bought a backup aid car. We're moving in the right direction. So thank you, staff, and thank you, firefighters.
Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, go ahead and place your vote. Passes unanimously. So that's the end of our, oh wait, we have one add-on, but we probably need to extend the meeting or do you think we can cover it in four minutes? Councilmember Spivey? Or do you want to wait to another day? You're the one that wanted to add it.
I think I'll try and slip it in on the next meeting. Undo the agenda.
All right.
All right, thank you.
So we'll do that some other day. Is there a motion adjourned?
Some of, second.
Moved by Councilmember, who was that over here? McNeil? Second by Councilmember Spivey. Go place your vote. Passes 6 to 1 with Councilman Agnew and the negative adjourn.